Would board members please come to the board table? Thank you. Would all board members please come to the table? This February 9th, 2017, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Mason Crest Elementary School Strings under the direction of Nick Walker. Thank you very much, Mason Crest Elementary School Strings, and thank you to the parents that brought your talented children out here tonight to share them with us.
I think we have Principal Mason Crest, Brian Butler, here in the audience as well. Thank you, Mr. Butler, for sharing your outstanding students with us.
Thank you for being here tonight. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on February 9th, 2017, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Hines, seconded by Mrs. Strauss. All those in favor, raise your hand. Hines, Huff, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, McElveen, all those opposed, all those abstaining, Ms. Wilson. And that motion passes. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. Item 5.07, Audit Committee Citizen Member Appointment, item has been moved to the February 23rd Consent Agenda. There are six speakers signed up to address this item tonight. We continue to welcome their comments about the Audit Committee Citizen Member Appointment. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that's being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphones. I now call on Ms. Chu for announcements.
Thank you, Most Honorable Chair. Yesterday was Crossing Guard Appreciation Day. Crossing Guard Appreciation Day, a statewide event to say thank you to the individuals who help students cross the street safely on their way to and from school, was celebrated in FCPS. FCPS will observe the day by honoring the 80 crossing guards who manage 174 school-related crossings every day. FCPS crossing guards are employees of the Fairfax County Police Department. Schools and communities can plan their own Crossing Guard Appreciation Day activities to recognize the valuable role crossing guards play in ensuring student safety. The FCPS Safe Roots to School program and the Virginia Department of Transportation's Safe Roots to School website may offer ways for you to show your appreciation to a crossing guard in your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. We now have Item 2.04, Recognition of Custodian Appreciation Week, and I call on Ms. Hines.
Thank you very much. This is such a privilege to honor our custodians. These are the true unsung heroes of our school system, I think. They keep our buildings safe and attractive for our students every day. We don't have to worry about that, no matter the age or, you know, relative state of repair of some of our buildings, knowing that we are, you know, beyond where we should be in terms of our renovation cycle sometimes, and these are older buildings that need a lot of work. And we know how important their work is for our students and our teachers. And also, I think custodians provide for students every day a role model of caring and hard work in the buildings, and they see that. They see people giving and working hard every day. So, thank you for being here tonight and for all you do. We do have something I will read, a recognition. "The School Board Recognizes the Hard Work and Unending Dedication of the Custodians Who Work for Fairfax County Public Schools. Our custodians are the first employees to arrive in the morning and the last employees to leave at night. By providing clean and safe school environments, the custodians at FCPS have a direct impact on the educational success of our students. Many custodians take additional training, leading to certification as professional custodians. The week of February 20th to 24th has been named Custodian Appreciation Week to recognize and thank our dedicated custodians, whose attention to detail and high standards affect all students, employees, and many members of the community." At this time, I would like to invite all of our great custodians who are in the audience tonight to join us at the dais for a picture with the Board.
If I could, Mr. Moon's asked to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Madam Chu. I just want to extend my special appreciation and welcome to the School Board meeting for our super custodians. You know, brings me memories going back many, many years ago when my own mother was a school custodian. I know that our custodians, they work for their own American dreams as well as American dreams of their own children. Thank you for your hard work and welcome.
All right, and we're actually going to ask Ms. Chu to do Student Representative Matters before Citizen Participation because we have some special guests tonight that she wanted to recognize before they have to leave.
Thank you. They could stand to be recognized, Troop 1013, Weeblella, from Stenwood School, the Boy Scouts, who are here completing their citizenship participation for their badges. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming tonight. So recently, I had a great time. I actually took a visit to Jeb Stuart the other day to talk to their leadership team, ESOL students, really just students from each grade because the elections for the next student representative are coming up, and a lot of schools are starting to spread the word to their students. So I'm very excited to be visiting more schools and getting the word out about the upcoming election. Today, at the Student Advisory Council meeting, we discussed how our county can improve with advocating against distracted driving. And we had the Fairfax County Police Department and the head of Security Department come and talk to our students, and it was an extremely informative presentation. Our students were actually just on Channel 4, I believe, an hour ago, talking about their experience with the presentation today, so it was wonderful. And with a lot of different schools, we're going to be starting projects to make sure that students know of the consequences of driving while distracted. In addition to this, a lot of our students are gearing up Mind Matters, maybe starting at Jeb Stuart High School, as well as a team. We've been working on a project to get Mental Health Wellness Club started in these schools. So the SAC is getting ready to wrap the year and complete our projects on mental health and awareness by having more clubs and more peer support groups out in our schools. So I'm just really happy to announce all that today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chu. The next order of business is Citizen Participation. Tonight, 10 citizens have signed up to address the Board, and we also have one video testimony. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in the audience at these meetings and watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come out to speak to us tonight. I'm going to call the first three names, and if you would come down and be ready to speak, we would appreciate it. The first speaker is Eliza Minock, speaking on the Audit Committee Appointment, Anna Erman, speaking on the Award of Contract Relocation Services for Portable Classroom Trailers, and David Mica, ERFC 2001 Plan Modifications. Ms. Minock?
Hello, my name is Alisa Minock, and I'm a freshman at Chantilly High School. On Tuesday, February 6th, I attended a learning seminar on diversity, which was about race, religion, and sexual orientation. I was not previously aware of this planned lesson or what we were going to be taught. During the approximately 30-minute video, diversity of religion was discussed, as well as the need to respect all races and sexual orientations. The majority of the video centered around the LGBT community and how everyone must be accepting and inclusive of them. However, I was confused because the lifestyle choices demonstrated in the video go against my religious beliefs. I became frustrated because I felt obligated to sit through a video on sexual orientation, which I don't believe should be part of our academic teachings. School is where academics should be taught, not LGBT inclinations. After watching the video, it was my impression that the Fairfax County School was attempting to force me to believe in something that doesn't respect my beliefs and that I had no say in the matter. The whole situation made me feel stressed and uncomfortable. I was raised to have and be respectful of others. I do not need to be told to be respectful, to respect for others. My respect for an individual does not mean that I have to approve of their lifestyle choices. This video was about diversity, and yet it seems as if my rights and beliefs as a Catholic are not respected. I respect the fact that we as Americans can choose to live our lives in a manner that makes us feel best, but I do not believe that the school should be trying to force me to accept LGBT beliefs. I received the same feedback from some of my friends, and they also thought that they were being forced to approve of the LGBT lifestyle. I believe that I am not alone and that many others feel this way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anna Erman.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Anna Erman. I'm a Fairfax County resident, a parent of one, soon-to-be two school-aged children here. Professionally, I am a government contracts procurement law subject matter expert, so this topic is near and dear to me both personally and professionally. I support the Audit Committee's work and believe that the School Board owes it to the residents, taxpayers, and parents of this county to have an independent, unbiased mechanism to ensure that our money is wisely, directly, and accountably spent in the classrooms. One glaring example where an independent auditor's assessment would be timely and relevant is the recent award to Batel for Kids of a five-year contract that's initially valued at $279,000. The contract is for leadership development, where most of the investment is into assessors who observe classrooms, perform leadership training with principals and administrators at the schools. At a time when our kids are attending school in trailers, while these same administrators are residing in Class A LEED-certified new office complex, we cannot afford to waste more money on buttressing up the upper echelons. This $279,000 contract, by the way, was increased in July 2016, just 10 weeks before Superintendent Garza announced that she accepted a job as president and CEO of Batel, the contractor. Modification was exercised to add $363,000 more to the second year of the contract. That's over $300,000 more, or about 649% than originally planned for the year. It would be at least naive to assume that the two negotiations were conducted without knowledge of one another. She is, after all, the incoming CEO of that organization. I urge the School Board to examine the findings and results of Batel's 18-month work for the schools, determine whether our children are reaping the rewards, talk to the teachers who aren't getting enough resources, ask the parents whose kids' programs are being slashed. The Board has a duty to reexamine the ethics violations committed here, both the Virginia Conflicts of Interest Act Title 2.2-3100 and your own policy 1801.7, which applies to yourselves as well as the superintendent of schools. Specifically prohibited actions include gaining anything of value professional services while performing official duties, or with a reasonable likelihood that the opportunity is being offered to influence in performance of official duties. Ms. Garza is in violation of several of these provisions. I urge you, for the best interest of the county and our kids, to allow an independent, unbiased audit committee to examine such expenditures and honestly determine whether they're truly in the best interest of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have David Mica, to be followed by Monica Cameron, to be followed by James Ruland.
Madam Chairwoman, members of the Board, Mr. and term Superintendent, members of the FCPS staff, retired and current teachers. My name is David Mica, and I've come to speak with you this evening about your planned vote on changes to ERFC. I rise tonight to put one face before you that will be impacted by your decisions, that of my father, Walter John Mica, a former employee of this school system. Both of my parents, Walter and Harret, were teachers in Fairfax County for a combined 64 years. We lost my mother three years ago to lung cancer, but teaching in this county and giving the gift of knowledge to its children was both my parents' calling in life. My father's work extended beyond the classroom and in service of his fellow teachers and those who came, his fellow teachers and those who came before him. He served as a member and a vice chairperson of the ERFC Board, and also served in the Virginia Retirement System, serving one term as the vice chairman. I'm here this evening because of my father cannot. Walter, who spent so many of his years of my life focused on the training of young minds, is now forced to hold on to what he can of his own. He suffers from dementia Alzheimer's, in my mind, an ending that is unfair for anyone. So I've come to ask you to think about this one retiree, and this one retiree, your former employee, in the context of these three questions. Are the changes that are proposed tonight fair and equitable to Walter if he was starting his, just starting his career? I ask you this because at the age of 34, he and others banded together and worked to birth ERFC. Even at that young age, my father thought of those around him and wanted to make sure that their later years, they would not have to rely on others, that they would, could be comfortable. Please stop and think about your current younger staff who will be impacted by this, these changes. I ask you to also, as you're considering that, I also ask you to think about the broader implications of your actions. I've read varied reports about how much these changes may save FCPS. My question is, how will those savings that you take from ERFC today be made up for by future retirees? Where will the funding come from? None of us may be able to give a definitive answer on this, but I stand here to say that taking money today is not worth the risk to those future employees. And last, in one of the most expensive places in the United States to live, are the changes that you're considering making to ERFC fair to your employees today and tomorrow? If Walter was your father, facing the challenges he is, would you make these changes? I'm here tonight, members of the Board, to stand for my father, his coworkers, fellow teachers, and retirees, because all that came my father and mother worked, slept, sweat, and loved their work as a Fairfax County Public School teacher. Members of the Board, I ask you to consider carefully your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Monica Cameron speaking on the Audit Committee Appointment.
Hi, I'm Monica Cameron. I am the mother of three Fairfax County Public School students, and I am a daughter of a retired, fully-funded retired teacher. The topic of the Audit Committee Member Selection was on the agenda when I signed up, but has since then been put on the Consent Agenda without any discussion. I think this topic is, as it relates, I think this topic, as it relates now to the school budget, is important, and I am here tonight on behalf of an army of concerned citizens to request the School Board put internal, independent audits to the top of its priorities. Citizens expect the School Board not only to prepare an audit plan, but source, conduct audits on schedule. We also expect follow-up and action taken on audit findings and recommendations. The following are just a few of the instances where the auditor's findings and recommendations were not acted upon. In the contract management audit, it was sampled that 67% of all contracts are sole sourced. That means FCPS doesn't compete or request for proposal or solicitation to compete for best practice. In the government sector, you need at least three bids to prove reasonable competition and very strong written justification if it is sole sourced. Best-case scenario, FCPS has justification for why 67% of its purchases are sole sourced. But worst-case scenario, we need to know if there are any serious conflicts of interest. I'm a professional contracts administrator, and there is irresponsible, and this is irresponsible spending, not a best practice for any organization, especially a $2.7 billion organization, and certainly not good stewardship of taxpayer dollars. and certainly not good stewardship of taxpayer dollars. Number two, the audit for, the carryover of ending balance of $144 million needs to be done immediately. Citizens need assurances that the ending balance is not taxpayer dollars of unrealized projects that continually get turned over as a means to keep hold of the funding. Ending balance should be reviewed annually by an independent auditor reporting to the school board, not an auditor reporting to the superintendent and the COO. Good stewardship would require that funds for a non-contracted project that hasn't been initiated within two years should be freed up and used to fund other essential needs. And hey, how about this, teacher's salary increases. Many consider that the school board has been fully funded every year. An independent audit of the ending balance and the carryover funds would likely ensure FCPS would not have budget shortfall every year, as it has. Number three, audit of the healthcare costs valued at $284 million should be done annually, as do most school systems around the county, country. Research has shown that cost savings on erroneous billings and administrative errors have resulted, have reconciled from 1% to 10% of the expenses. So in our county, that would create a cost savings of up to $2.8 million a year. The audit would pay for itself and leave money for other expenses. And hey, like teacher's salary increases. Number four, the SAC contract from the construction bond audit. Most people are unaware that FCPS has a contract with Fairfax County to sublet school, I'm almost done, sublet school space to use for the school-age childcare program. Remarkably, this contract has not been renegotiated in its entirety for 30 years. And even if some of the audits have been completed, had been completed in a timely manner.
Could you wrap up, please? Could you wrap up?
Pardon me?
Could you wrap up?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Even, this is my last two sentences. Even if some of these audits had been completed in a timely manner and actions had been taken by the school board, FCPS could have already saved programs and stopped teachers from leaving to go to other counties for higher salaries. We love our teachers, and we ask that you do your parts to keep them in FCPS by conducting an immediate, independent audit of the carryover funds and ending balance. I thank you very much.
James Ruland.
Good evening. My name is Jim Ruland. Thank you for leaving to speak to you tonight about the Audit Committee Appointment. The relevant regulation says the mission of this office is to independently determine whether the ongoing processes for controlling fiscal and administrative options through the Fairfax County Public Schools are adequately designed, functioning in an effective manner, and fully accountable to its citizens. After you revised the regulation in 2012, you added two community members to the Audit Committee, you hired an auditor general, put her on paid leave after one year, and she and the senior audit manager no longer work for the Fairfax County Public Schools. You just hired an interim auditor general with a background in human resources, not in finance or audit. And our last superintendent left unexpectedly, just after you renewed her contract. What happened? It's hard to tell, because so many meetings are done in closed sessions. Fairfax County Public Schools talk about transparency, but when push comes to shove, transparency gives way to hypocrisy. Could it be potential fraud, abuse, poor management? Top-heavy management and constantly chasing new fads? Are we spending too much time on transgender regulations, determining which term should be used in K-12? Z, zim, zur, or zee? Personally, my preferred pronoun is "Your Majesty." Unfortunately, my wife disagrees. We can get a hint of what you're doing from some proposed rules the Audit Committee has been discussing. The new version of Regulation 1410 says that internal controls have to be practicable, and conduct is only problematic if it's measurable as well as both substantive and consequential under the circumstances. Other sections limit investigation of school board members, the superintendent, and other top brass. Why? Regulation 1420 is becoming a school board policy, and you're deleting the section about having two community members and four school board members as the only voting members. Does that mean you intend to return to the good old days and put the CEO, COO, and CFO back on the Audit Committee as voting members? To make sure any potential investigations can be nipped in the bud and dirty laundry is kept well-hidden? What prompted all these changes? Why did the auditor general and senior audit manager leave? Why don't you want any requirements in the revised rules about who can and who can't be a voting member on the Audit Committee? If you aren't willing to answer these types of questions, why should the public trust you to manage the school system's resources? Thank you, and I send, that's the end of my talk.
Thank you. Jack Wosia.
Yes, good evening. My name is Jack Wojcik, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak. I would like to start by stating that, with respect to the Audit Committee Appointment, I support auditing the schools to help improve management accountability and protect against abuse and waste. My remarks today will address the widespread abuse and waste that the illegal extension of Policy 1450 to include gender identity will cause. Today, tens of thousands of Fairfax County Public School children and their parents and grandparents, along with thousands of teachers and administrators, are being bullied into accepting that a student can change their God-given biological identity from male to female, or female to male, despite it being impossible to change sexes. This unwanted school pressure is not only an egregious violation of their personal and religious freedom, but a blatant attack on common sense. Even worse, adding gender identity will put thousands of students in harm's way. These are the students who are susceptible to consider changing their gender identity when they never would have otherwise. The power of suggestion by respected public school administrators and faculty, combined with aggressive intimidation by LGBT activists and the radical left, may be too much for some of them to withstand. This unwanted pressure is clearly a violation of their personal and religious liberty, as well as that of their families. The second horrific impact of this proposal is that boys will go into girls' bathrooms, locker rooms, and even showers, and vice versa, when they are clearly unwanted and in itself is a form of sexual harassment. Sexual promiscuity is bound to increase as boys continue to see girls undress and shower, and vice versa. Even worse, the risk of assault and rape will increase as barriers to protect students from confused people and those who would take advantage of the system are removed. The greatest impact of this outrageous attack on common decency will be on the innocent and unsuspecting elementary school students. They will be forced to prematurely abandon their childhood and forced to endure a lie or be chided by some of their peers if they don't. Even worse, the school system is morally and illegally experimenting with the minds and hearts of impressionable children, 99% of whom are mentally and physically healthy. Lastly, student safety and security will be grossly compromised. Allowing boys to go in the girls' bathrooms or locker rooms will undoubtedly make most female students who may be there alone to feel unsafe. It will only take one unwanted confrontation to be seen in the news to scare all public school students and their families and cause unlimited financial liability upon the school system. It should be clear, then, that extending Policy 1450 to include gender identity will result in the abuse of all Fairfax County Public School students and their families. Also, tens of millions of dollars will be wasted to cover related administrative management and legal costs. Therefore, I solemnly urge you to repeal the proposed amendment of extension of Policy 1450. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have John Murray, to be followed by Tom Cranmer, to be followed by Erica Newsom and Kevin Hickerson. Mr. Murray?
I have a substitute.
Good evening. I'll be speaking for Mr. Murray tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to provide some thoughts on an Audit Committee Appointment. An audit is an important aspect of public.
Excuse me, could you state your name?
Oh, sure.
And when you're finished, could you please let our clerk have your contact information?
Sure. My name is Karen Hostelman. An audit is an important aspect of public accountability. Having another person review your activities and comparing them against specific criteria is unnerving, but can be valuable as you have the opportunity for an impartial observer to give you feedback regarding your working techniques, and determining if the problems the program was designed to mitigate has been effective. As an example, let's look at the Family Life Education Program. The Fairfax County Parent and Child Group completed a review of the FLE program due to continued insertion of questionable material into the FLE curriculum over the objections and concerns of some Fairfax County parents and taxpayers. The parent and child group's assessment of the 91 lessons in the current curriculum provided 36 opt-out recommendations and 40 caution advisories to parents. In short, the parent and child group assessed that over 40% of the FLE program includes objectionable instruction, and another 40% of the instruction is advisory. Does the public and the curriculum developers even know why? And this has been sent out to many parents. The Fairfax County School Board should consider appointing people to the Audit Committee who are qualified to conduct an independent audit of the FLE curriculum to include all lessons that have been improperly transferred to the health curriculum, which deny parents the ability to opt their children out of the instruction. Most importantly of all, the audit should determine the effectiveness of the FLE program in reducing problems it was established to prevent. As a reminder, the FLE program was started in the late '80s and early '90s to combat the increase of teen pregnancy and STDs, mostly HIV/AIDS. Specifically, the Code of Virginia stated the FLE program was created to provide instruction for students in family living and community relationships, human sexuality, human reproduction, the value of postponing sexual activity, the etiology, prevention, and effects of STDs. The goal was to reduce the incidence of pregnancy or STDs and substance abuse among teenagers, has it? In 1999, a legislator added abstinence. In 2002, adoption is a positive choice for an unwanted pregnancy. In 2004, steps to avoid sexual assault and avoiding and the availability of counseling and legal resources. In 2007, dating violence. Turning back to Virginia Code, all FLE was designed to promote parental involvement. A qualified audit could also include attestation engagements of the parents to determine their degree of parental involvement made readily available. Thank you for listening, and consideration of appointing a member of the parent and child organization to the Audit Committee to lead an audit of the FLE program in 2017.
Thank you. Tom Cranmer, to be followed by Erica Newsom.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Board Members. Appreciate the opportunity of being here with all the parents here and students. The speakers before have been very thorough and provided some really important topics. I hope that the board members really listen and take those comments into account. I would like to compliment Elizabeth Schultz for her comments today on WMAL. You can hear them, if you didn't hear them this afternoon, by going to WMAL and listening on their podcast. She made some really important points. One was the importance of the parental role. You know, people love to talk about, "Let's give more money to the schools." Well, the difference in learning, I think, is primarily, perhaps 50%, because of parents' guidance and encouragement, and certainly having pushy parents. It's very, very important. And in all the discussion, I never hear of this. Elizabeth talked about critical thinking. This is really important, to be able to analyze things. We seem to be generating an enormous number of kids who can't analyze their way out of a paper bag. They can't understand, for example, in the discussion about the temporary stay on bringing in immigrants from a handful of countries. This wasn't a Muslim thing. It was clearly, if anybody bothered to read what was actually in the order, it says nothing about Muslims. I don't have anything against Muslims. I studied in a mosque for three years. And it's just important to be able to read, as well as write, and compute. And apparently, for Berkeley, the university, 47% of the graduates are still living with their parents in their parents' basement? This is really incredible in this situation of America. America has a ranking internationally of only 25 out of all the countries in the world. I worked in Outer Mongolia. The Outer Mongolians, who basically, for the most part, live in tents and slums, exceed in mathematics and beat practically everybody. Why are they succeeding and we aren't? You've got to analyze what's going on. The school board has become the enemy of teachers and the kids and the parents and the taxpayers. Thank you.
I've been asked to remind speakers that, if you haven't already, to please give a copy of your written testimony to the clerk, so we can post them. Erica Newsom? Is Erica Newsom here? All right, Kevin Hickerson, President of FBA, to talk about the ERFC 2001 Plan modifications.
Before I speak, would it be possible also for John Nemec to be put on the list if Ms. Newsom is not here? Okay, I didn't know, I didn't, I was just asking. That's my fault, I was just asking.
Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to? I'm afraid not.
Okay, thank you. I would like to give John Nemec some of my time to speak.
My name is John Nemec. I'm the President of Fairfax County Professional Firefighters and Paramedics, IAAF Local 2068. On behalf of over 1,900 members, I stand here in full support and solidarity of my sisters and brothers in education's labor. When is enough enough? Since the Great Recession, public employees, teachers, firefighters, police officers, and the like have taken it on the chin. Elected officials, political pundits, and many others have blamed us for the interruption of our nation's growth and economic future. Tell that to a family where firefighters and paramedics just saved a life. A teacher working tirelessly with a special-needs child, or a police officer who just removed children from an abusive household. Because the Mills Tax did not pass, don't balance the school budget on the backs of our teachers. Have a plan. Get the impact you pass, before you pass any changes, to the teachers' pension system. What you're proposing this evening would be a major setback, not only to the pension system overall, but more importantly, to future employees. Teachers, who are going to have a major influence with shaping our children, the world's future. Both of my daughters are a product of the Fairfax County Public School system, and I'm proud of that. My youngest daughter is finishing up her master's degree at George Washington University in school counseling. With that, with what you're proposing this evening would most certainly affect her future should she decide to apply for employment with Fairfax County. Vote no on this proposal to change the ERFC. Thank you.
Can't say it better than John, and you know our position. And we put a petition out, and we got stories. We gathered a lot of them. And we gathered a lot of them from the non-vested employees that you plan to make changes to. One employee said, "The FCPS Board plan to modify and reduce my ERFC benefits is extremely upsetting. I have accepted a lower current income than I have had in the prior 30 years, spent significant time and money to obtain a teaching license, refreshed my math skills and knowledge, and obtained a master's in special education, spent far more than contract hours to do a good job for my students and my school with the anticipation of a reasonable retirement benefit. Now I find that because I will have four years accrued in the ERFC plan at the conclusion of this year, the Board feels at liberty to renege on its promised ERFC benefits after I have honored my obligations to my students, my school, and FCPS. This does not promote engagement. I consider this plan of modifying ERFC to be a direct violation of the agreement that I entered into with FCPS." Another teacher said, "I lost my husband four years ago and began teaching for Fairfax County Public Schools. It's difficult to start a new career later in life. I am very worried about when I'll ever be able to retire and how I'll be able to take care of myself in the future as a non-vested employee." These are your employees. These are the stories. Hands off our ERFC. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one video testimony from Darrell Richards, also on ERFC.
Hi, my name is Darrell Richards, and I'm a teacher at.
My name is Darrell Richards, and I'm a teacher at Woodson High School. I have three things that I ask for you to consider when considering the changes to the ERFC pension plan. The first one is, what CPI should you use? You can either use a national CPI or a local CPI. The Fairfax County Retirement Plan uses the local CPI as documented here. There is a quite big difference, but the local CPI actually does include both West Virginia and all of Virginia as a state, not just the DC metro area, which would likely actually have a higher rate of inflation than all of those states combined. Now, that brings us to the next question, which is, should you change the COLA at all? Retirement benefits benefit the local economy in which the retiree lives, because they actually will spend the money there, which then benefits the economy. It's best for us to keep the retirees in Fairfax County, which is hard to do because our cost of living is so high in Fairfax County. The 3% COLA helps them to be able to stay here in Fairfax County and keep the local dollars in the county. Which then brings us to my last concern, the Rule of 90 Amendment. Now, I understand the reason for the Rule of 90 Amendment, which would be to actually bring us more in line with the VRS Pension Plan, but the thing to notice there is that VRS has an early retirement eligibility of 60 and five years of service. Also, that Rule of 90 would then trump the other part of the ERFC retirement, which is 60 and five years of service. So please do take that into consideration when you consider that amendment. Thank you very much, and I do hope you have a good day.
Thank you. And that concludes our citizen participation. Thank you for everyone who came out tonight. We next go to item 4.01, Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the Board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. I call on Ms. Hines for the first motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed an illegal drug at school and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Strauss. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Hines, Palchek.
Oh, are you? Okay.
Huff is here. Schultz, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, Darnett Kofax, and McElveen. All those opposed, all those abstaining, McLaughlin and Wilson. That motion passes. I call on Mrs. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you. I move to terminate the employment of a specific employee identified in closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hines. All those in favor, raise your hand. That's Hines, Palchek, Huff, Schultz, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Darnett Kofax, and McElveen. All those opposed, all those abstaining, Evans, McLaughlin, and Wilson. That motion passes. We turn to item 4.02, ERFC 2001 Plan Modifications. I call on Mr. Moon for the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the School Board direct the ERFC Board of Trustees to initiate the process to implement the following ERFC Plan Modifications effective July 1, 2017. All ERFC members, one, lowering the interest crediting rate on ERFC member accounts from 5% to 4%. ERFC 2,000 members hired onward after July 1, 2017, and non-vested members as of June 30, 2017. Two, instituting minimum requirement age of 55. Three, increasing the period for calculating the final average salary from three years to five years. Four, changing the cost of a living adjustment to equal 100% of the Consumer Price Index with a cap of 4% and present the ERFC 2,000 amended plan document to the School Board for approval by June 2, 2017.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Strauss. Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, Madam Chair. I understand that there will be a motion to postpone, which I intend to support. Even though I am fully prepared to vote on the main motion, I also want to respect the desire of several board members, several colleagues of mine, who want to have more time and more information to make an informed decision. That is why I will be supporting the motion to postpone later on. But I saw, I am not going to address the merits or demerits of the main motion itself this evening, but I want to explain to the public how we got to this point. Back in, about a year ago, School Board, School System hired a consultant to conduct a study which benchmarked Fairfax County Public Schools' retirement benefit leverage to surrounding school divisions and Fairfax County Governments and also federal government. That was as a part of effort to support increasing employee salaries and improve the sustainability of the FCPS's supplementary retirement program, so-called ERFC. And in May of last year, May of last year, ERFC presented the history of Fairfax County School Systems' retirement programs, along with the key provisions of the existing plans. And at that time, the consultant also presented ERFC options for possible future consideration. And in July of last year, to be exact, July 21, the School Board considered the benefit impact of various options, including those elements which are part of tonight's main And after that, we had three more, four more work sessions. It was September and November and December. And finally, in January of this year, the School Board discussed what the consensus main motion on ERFC modifications should be. And what I read as the main motion was the consensus motion by the Board. Again, I'm not going to address the merits and demerits of the main motion itself, but I'll be supporting the motion to postpone.
Mrs. Strauss?
I have nothing to add. Thank you very much, Mr. Moon, for your detailed chronology of what has transpired in order to bring us to this point. Thank you.
And I'm going to call on Ms. Palchek for a privileged motion. Ms. Palchek?
Thank you, yes. I move to postpone further discussion on the motion until April.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Palchek, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. I will try, and I appreciate my colleagues who have been patient with Ms. Corbett Sanders and I in this really last-minute decision to postpone a final decision. While the initial understanding, when we began discussions, and there have been many, as Mr. Moon explained, was that the decision to make any changes to the ERFC needed to occur at this time by February, we have spoken to staff, and they've informed us that we indeed can postpone the decision and make the proposed changes if we choose to in April. This will allow us to receive further information from the ERFC Board, which I believe will be asked for today, and I will support that, and to have discussions with those who would be affected by those changes. This does not mean that we will or will not make proposed changes at that time. This means that we have the ability to wait, to have a better understanding of what the final budget transfer will be from the county, and to discuss the various options in a more holistic manner that depend on our benefits, so salary and our full benefits package, including pensions and healthcare. To be clear, I think it's important that we need to ensure for our children that we continue to recruit and retain the best staff in our county, and we are in tight times, and these are difficult conversations. So in order to ensure that and to give ourselves the time to receive information about short-term and long-term possibilities and the costs and benefits of those to our system, I do ask my colleagues to join Ms. Corbett Sanders and I in postponing further conversation on decisions that could have huge impacts on our staff and on our system. That being said, I do hope that we're able to ask the follow-on motions in whatever manner they happen, should this motion pass, that Ms. Huff and Ms. Hines will be asking of our ERFC Board, because I think it has come to light more recently, since we had our initial conversations, that there may be additional data or alternative options that we have not been able to look at. So, to be clear, this is a postponement until April, which is after the March 31 deadline of a request that may be coming after this for information from our ERFC Board.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, please. Ms. Palchek, thank you for your just work, such hard work and diligence on this, because what this decision would mean is that we have the time to collect more information and to make more informed decision-making. I know that there is a commitment amongst this Board to continuously look at our processes and look at our way of doing things to improve. And so there are some additional areas of information that people want to gain additional information, but there's also continued dialogue that needs to take place, both amongst ourselves and with the community. We are committed to ensuring that all of our staff are given a competitive and, really, a competitive benefits package that includes salary and benefits. So we need to look at this in a comprehensive way. We also have to look at this in the bigger context of the budget that we know is going to be a tough budget season. And so I welcome having a bit more time in postponing this decision until after March 30.
Thank you. I have Ms. McLaughlin.
So I appreciate the hard work that several of my colleagues have done in trying to find the best approach to a very complicated decision. And we certainly, as a Board, have benefited from the input that we've received from both our current employees, our retired employees, in helping us understand how a broad change can impact individual lives. So I've certainly appreciated that. I did want to just have a little more clarity for myself as a Board member, as well as, I think, for the public. And it goes to the point that Ms. Palchek raised, that originally, the Board was directed that we really needed to make a decision now, here in early February. And now we've come to learn just recently that we can push this out until April. And so I really would appreciate, since I only learned about this today, can someone help me better understand why we now have almost two more months? I mean, what change that's enabling us to push this out for another two months, given that I look at tonight, which is always a very difficult time for us? We're trying to prepare an advertised budget to send over to the Board Supervisors. So having two substantial decisions before the Board is always something we're trying to avoid. So I would like Dr. Lockhart, if someone on your staff can just explain to me, how did we suddenly realize that we've got some breathing room here? Because I think that's important to understand when Ms. Corbett Sanders, you talked about process. To me, this is a process, what we're doing here tonight.
So I could try to address that. Since we heard from the Board back in December, we did initiate the work to make the system changes. And in order to meet that requirement, even though the vote won't take place in April, we will continue to go down the path of that work, so that in April, if the Board does vote to make the changes, we'll be ready for July 2018. But if the Board decides not to make changes, we'll have to stop our work at that time. We have to continue to do the work, or else we won't be ready for July 2018 implementation.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that explanation, and I do recognize that, in other words, you're sort of, the train's going down the track right now, but at some point, we can divert the train or stop the train and go a different direction. But you're trying to get the necessary steps in place if needed. But I would just say that then, as a Board, we would probably do better by getting that clarity sooner. And I think if we also had a sense that we were reaching this point of starting to be concerned about this February deadline, I think we would have been better off to have communicated that sooner than tonight. So I do plan to support the delay. I have shared with my colleagues during our numerous work sessions on this issue that I think it's most important that we continue to review this issue in the broader context of what the county government employees have. I just feel that there needs to be equity and fairness. And so as we continue to have this conversation, should the Board delay tonight, then I would ask our retired employees, our current employees, to not only stay engaged in this, but to support that message of, you know, let's look at how we can have equity and fairness in our benefits packages between what the county offers its employees and what we offer here. And finally, I do want to also say to Ms. Corbett Sanders, I appreciate that you had another amendment on the table that I was feeling was important, which was to remove the non-vested employees from being affected, so it would only be new employees that would be affected. And so to those of you in the audience who are those non-vested members, I think there is many of us that recognize how this change, for many of you who've already devoted up to four years of service to our school system, we're finding this to be a very difficult prospect of change. So I encourage you to keep your voices strong on this until the Board makes a final decision.
Mrs. Huff?
So I have a question about the motion. If we were to postpone till April, presumably, we'd come back to a work session. Is that the plan?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I have a point of order.
Yes?
A point of order. This is a subsidiary motion, and for a subsidiary motion, it's got to either be postponed indefinitely or postponed definite. And April is not definite, and so...
Madam Clerk?
As I hear Ms. Huff's beginning her question, that raises the point of order that this is not either to an indefinite postponement, nor is it to a time definite.
So could Madam Clerk or Mr. Foster, have you reviewed the language of this amendment to see if it... To see, it says April, discussion in April.
Right. You know, Robert's rules, as Ms. Schultz indicates, speaks to postponing definitely or postponing indefinitely. Okay?
Indefinitely means?
Indefinitely means just that there's no date identified. But definitely, and so, you know, my recommendation would be, rather than having just April, that you specify a date, and that would be fully consistent with Robert's rules. You know, I think that it does raise questions, as Ms. Schultz has identified, if it just says April, is that sufficiently definite?
So, Ms. Palchek, would you want to amend your motion to give us a date certain, to make it comply with what our counsel is?
Yes, if I can speak to it. Originally, the date chosen was April 6. That would allow ample time for the March 1 deadline. The concern was having a work session in there. And so I think it would be very difficult for staff to get us all this information in time for the March work session to have this discussion April 6. So a possibility would be, A, to have it on April 6, but then to have the work session on April, as new business, on the April 20 work session discussion and the April 27 meeting for a vote. If we do not need to go back to new business...
But your motion doesn't include any of that. So I think what we're looking for is a date certain that we would be voting on this...
And Madam Chair, I mean, it could be, without a date, it could say the second regular business meeting in April. I mean, that is definite and conforms to parliamentary... I mean, that's, that is definite and conforms to parliamentary procedure and would allow us to actually take a vote on a motion that's in order.
Ms. Schultz, I understand, it's still the same concern. So, I'm happy to say April 6th, and if we realize that we need to postpone it to April 27th because we need that work session, I can do that. I think we can pick April 6th, it's fine. I do want to make sure that we have a work session before the vote.
Well, if that's the case, our March work session is extremely full, and as is our entire March. So, I would suggest a later date then, in April. So, what do you...
Yeah, so then, let's say April 27th.
So, by April 27th?
Mm-hmm.
So, Madam Clerk, could you put up on the screen, okay, so, right now, it reads, if Ms. Palchuk, this is Ms. Palchuk's motion, so she has to be all right with this. "I move to postpone further discussion on the motion until the April 27th regular meeting." But that suggests we won't have further discussion. I'm sorry to be so picky, but if we're going to have...
Okay, so, how about April 6th?
But that doesn't get, take, and this is, all right. Excuse me, hang on a second. I've got a lot of people who want to say a lot of things, but I think I'm going to go back to Mr. Foster and say, I think you understand what Ms. Palchuk is trying to do here. So, can you help us with the language? If we're going to discuss it at a work session, then we can't say we're delaying the further discussion. So, what, what would be the appropriate language to do what Ms. Palchuk is trying?
I'm going to make a point of personal privilege. I suggest that we take a five-minute recess. No, a point of personal privilege is not debatable.
I think, that makes...
It's not debatable, Madam Chair. I'm, I make a...
You're, you're moving this as a motion?
As a, as a point of personal privilege.
I can take a five-minute, I can call a five-minute recess, which I will. Thank you. We're going to be in recess for five minutes while we discuss this with legal counsel.
And I think we would like to be able to have more conversations and discussion with them that is based on, you know, the short-term costs to them and long-term costs to them and to our system. So I have made this motion. I think it is open and I hope to work with the Chair if this were to pass and to our members of the Board as to what information we would like to discuss. I don't know if Ms. Corbett Sanders has additional information on that.
Well, I'd like to continue with the order in which people are speaking. So Ms. Huff, did you have?
Yes, well, I mean, I think that as a board, we need to direct staff as to exactly what we expect, which in my mind would include outstanding next steps, which I have, I've seen posted since September and not answered. But then also, is there going to be a direction to reach out to the employees? And are we giving them options to talk about and weigh? I just think that we have a lot of things to consider and I'm not exactly sure what we're asking. So I will leave it at that for my colleagues to comment on. So I have another question for Ms. Quinn. If we were to not delay tonight and we were to vote on either the amendment or the main motion itself, is it not also possible that as of April, we could then pull those changes if we got more information in March or thereafter that led us to not want to then make those changes?
Yeah. I want to make sure I understand your question, Ms. Huff. So you're asking on the ERFC motion, it's being postponed until April, right?
No, I'm asking if we were to not delay and we were to go forward with the main motion and then in April, we decided because of the information we were given or anything else we've received since then, if we want to pull that change that we make tonight, if we were to make a change tonight, is that possible?
So I just want to make sure I understand the scenario. So the scenario is things are approved tonight, right?
Let's just say main motion.
Main motion's approved and then later this spring in April, the Board makes a decision essentially not to implement those changes.
Correct.
And the question is, can you all do that?
Yes.
I think that under Robert's rules, certainly, there's a process, you know, a motion to reconsider what was previously approved and to undo that. You know, a related point is that under Virginia law, school boards and boards of supervisors, you all don't do line item appropriations. You do what are called lump sum appropriations. It's just a bottom line number that's approved as part of the advertised budget. And then it's up to the administration, working with the Board and with finance, to determine once you get that budget approved by the Board of Supervisors, how that money is going to be spent, okay? And so I think that's also relevant to your question. So to sum it up, I think that you could, after you approve it tonight, you would have the ability to later go back. It would be complicated. There would have to be a motion to reconsider an action that had previously been taken and then rescind it. And so, you know, it wouldn't be the easiest process, but there is a process in Robert's rules under which you could do that.
Well, I guess I'm not sure why it's complicated that way, but it's not complicated this way. I mean, we have put it in, the superintendent has put it in the proposed budget. And basically by this delay, we are going to be directing it be taken out of, I assume, to be taken out of the proposed budget if we have not given the direction for it to be in the proposed budget. Is that correct?
Well, that would be a question I would have.
So it's an answer I'd like before I decide.
Right.
So our thinking, Steve, let me see if I could try this. Our thinking was that because your advertised budget, we can't ultimately adopt a budget that's greater than your advertised budget because you're advertising a certain budget, right? So even though the reduction currently is included in the superintendent's budget and if you adopt the advertise with those reductions in it and then later on, when you postpone this action, let's say you take action in April and decides not to do any changes, you're committing yourself to make reductions of $4.7 million to balance the budget before you adopt it for the approved in May.
Right, I understand, but that's something we do all the time. That in itself is not complicated. That's just a burden to do on the maker of a motion to find the dollars that you're suggesting you take out or put in.
Correct, the maker and the Board as a whole. So if you're passing the motion to postpone, you are now committing the Board to reduce that budget by $4.7 million if the action in April is not to go forward with the changes.
Tonight, though.
Tonight.
We'll be changing the ask on the proposed budget if we delay the motion tonight.
And I think, our thinking is you don't have to reduce it tonight because that advertised-
I know we don't have to reduce it, but we're going to be increasing our ask.
No, you're committing yourself to make that reduction if you don't vote for it in April.
So the, I'm sorry, so the budget will stand as is with Dr. Lockard's recommendation for this change?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all for, I'll need to think on that.
All right, Mrs. Schultz, have you already spoken or you were on the list? Do you still want to be on the list?
Yeah, my on the list wasn't the other one.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Mrs. Schultz.
I was triggered by Ms. Huff's to ask a parliamentary and I'm glad we got that straight so that we have an in-order motion. Let me follow up Ms. Quinn on that question because that's kind of a little bit where I stand. Typically, just in plain speak, we have amendments posted days in advance and we talk to each other trying to figure out how we do the business of the Board and where we are on votes and things. And this just came up. So if we seem a little disheveled at the table, there's a reason why because we didn't exactly know what this would mean and what the implications are for the motions that had already been developed. So that's really my question because if there is a motion to delay and we don't act as advertised in our motions this evening, effectively, we're taking no action on the ERFC and there's $4.7 million that is in the budget for which there is no accounted action of the Board. Is that what I'm understanding?
At the time that you approve the advertise, it includes those actions, right?
But we haven't actually taken the actions. Because the whole reason, the whole reason the ERFC is on the agenda where it is this evening was because we were supposed to take action on ERFC prior to the budget. There's a reason that the agenda is ordered the way it is. If we effectively skip this portion of the agenda, we're moving into a budget that is set forth in such a fashion that the action that we needed to take earlier in the agenda on ERFC to put in order the budget is now not being taken.
So the cleaner way to do it at the advertise, when you adopt the advertised budget, is you could have an amendment that says increase the costs associated with the RFC changes and make the reductions somewhere else in the budget.
And see, this is the difficulty of a motion like this at the last minute is that's really what should have been contemplated prior to us coming to the table. Because it sounds to me like that's the only way that the rest of the order of the business of the Board is actually in order because we're talking about doing something that the successive item on our agenda now does not contemplate. And so I actually don't know how we're in order for the rest of the evening if the budget doesn't follow what we may do, which is to defer. I'll speak just briefly to the deferring. I think there has to be some contemplation over, on that side of the, that's not the dais, I don't know what that is, the galley, over what's about to happen on the next agenda item. And I don't know, Mr. Foster and Ms. Quinn, if you all need to get together on that. I do, I do support a delay, I think. I think I could support a delay. There are some substantive items that I think are outstanding, even though we've talked about this a lot. I appreciate the gentleman, and I'm sorry, I know he's from Woodson and I thought he was going to come back on, who spoke, who understood some of the questions that I was asking about aligning ERFC on a rule of 90. And I originally had that as a amendment to the ERFC motion and then decided to delay it to ask for more information. Anything that gives this Board effective information to help us in executive decision-making, complex executive decision-making like this, I think is beneficial. And so I'm imagining that that motion will pass later. It's unfortunate that we've arrived at sort of what I feel is sort of a hinky agenda at the last second because it doesn't feel like we're being very clean in our work and I'm not sure how the rest of the agenda goes. So that's my struggle is on the one hand, I agree, I think we should spend some more time talking to employees. I think we should solicit some more information from the ERFC Board of Trustees and should direct staff to provide us more information on passive management to reduce the costs that have come with the RFC. I feel a little bit like there is a message somehow that the motions before the Board would affect existing retirees. I don't know where that came from, but maybe that's our fault that we haven't effectively communicated because that's not actually, nothing that we're contemplating would affect any existing retirees. In fact, some of the budget motion that I have would actually benefit you because it would be better funded. So I guess I'll support a delay, but I think there's a big asterisk next to that based on whatever answer comes from our friends in the galley.
Mrs. Strauss?
Calorie, calorie would be better.
Thank you. I will support the delay. However, I do think it is appropriate that we are looking at our pension system. We need to balance many different aspects of upfront pay and pensions and benefits and all the rest of that, which is why we asked for a study of it in the first place. Depending on what decision we make in April, when it comes back in April, by that time we obviously will know what our revenues will be so that this decision will have to be made in the context of revenue from both the state and the county. And as we work through the various other amendments tonight, I am not agreeable to ask for more money from the Board of Supervisors than the bottom line that is asked now, which means that we already, well, we would have to make adjustments depending on what we decide to do in April. So at any rate, I will, I will vote for the delay. I know my colleagues would like to have a little more time to discuss this and we certainly want to make sure that we are informed in the best way possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank Ms. Palchek, this was hard to do on the last day. Thank you for trying though because I think as everyone can see, we are still trying to quite figure out what to do about this. So I'll support the delay. I think the value of postponing for me is sort of what Mrs. Strauss was just talking about. I seriously considered Ms. Corbett Sanders' proposed amendment for tonight that I guess we're probably not going to vote on if we pass the delay. But my concern was, you know, I would love to hold harmless our non-vested employees, but we do not yet know how we would pay for that because it's roughly $4 million. And when we get to April, I will have a better understanding of, you know, how am I balancing that important value against the other important values that we have? When we know what the revenue is, what are we trading for what? So that's the value to me of waiting until April to have this conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Darniakovacs.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. I will be supporting this motion. I appreciate Mr. Moon's chronology as to the many hours of work that have already gotten us in, gotten us to where we are today. But as of recent days, it became clear to me, the emails and conversations, that even with these many, many work sessions that we have and public meetings, there were still concerns amongst our employees about what we are doing. So this buys us some time. I think as we move to the next stage, as, you know, when I proposed the budget, I mean, I think that the choices on the table for our Board are, you know, what my colleagues have already stated. We either go in there and realize that in April, those somehow, if we're, we can either process it as it stands right now, we can make modifications to that or tonight, we can ask for an additional ask to the budget. That's also an amendment that can come up and then that would give us flexibility. We could ask for an additional $4.7 million. That could be an amendment when the budget goes through. So that's the other option that is on the table as we move forward to the next, as we talk about the budget. But for this portion of this, I just wanted to address that since we were kind of, kind of talking about it. But again, I'll be supporting this motion.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I indicated earlier, I am going to be supporting motion to postpone to initially, Ms. Palchek and I talked about doing April 6th, April 27th is probably a better date with having a work session, you know, prior to the regular meeting date of April 27th. And I am, I want to refresh recollection of my colleagues, you know, going back to January work session when we were developing this main motion, consensus motion. At the time, you'll all remember that we also discussed some other options, you know, besides what's on the main motion. And eventually, the consensus was, what I read as the main motion was going to be the main motion. And at that time, precisely because any motion is subject to amendments and there is no guarantee that main motion will pass, got to wait until actually, bold votes. Even though we directed, we gave our guidance, or a directive to interim superintendent back in December, December to include $4.7 million of budget reductions from ERFC, ERFC plan, if the ultimate action by the board deviates from that, from that, through amendments or by not, by not passing the main motion, we would have to reconcile, reconcile the differences, reconcile the discrepancy when we adopt the final budget in May. That was what we talked about. I know, there was a very long meeting and a couple of Board members were not there on that day due to our family and other reasons. But I just wanted to refresh the memory of my colleagues. That's exactly how we got to this point, how we were preparing ourselves for possible deviation from the main motion and how to reconcile that deviation. And I strongly urge my colleagues to stick that basically agreement that by passing this, by passing this motion to postpone, the main motion until April 27th, let's just keep the $4.7 contained in the proposed budget as is. And after we make our final decision on April 27th, if there's a discrepancy, reconcile the differences in May. That is my strong suggestion to my colleagues as discussed in January, at the January work session.
Mrs. Huff?
Okay, so I could potentially support this delay, but I want to ask staff to have certain information ready because my concern is, we're going to get to a work session a few days before the work session, it'll be posted, and we're going to have too much information to discuss. And how do we get to a real decision by April 27th that's more informed than right now? I think it is acceptable to ask for any outstanding ERFC work session items, compare ERFC to FCRE for both in fees, returns, benefits and contributions. And I think it'd be fair to bring back the compensation chart to show where our employees are when you include the $40 million we put into mid-year teachers last year as well as the $33 million that's proposed this year for the teacher salary scale. And with that, I think it needs to be posted in time for us to discuss, for the community to see, so that we have time to reach out to the organizations and the teachers and get input. With that, if we are, can be in agreement to those next steps, I could support this motion.
Mrs. Schultz, did you have a go back?
I do. Ms. Quinn, are there any outstanding ERFC budget questions? Or Ms. Michael, I'm sorry.
I don't believe that there are outstanding ERFC budget questions. I thought we had addressed the items from the September work session in our subsequent ERFC presentations. So if the Board feels that they weren't addressed, it would be helpful to get clarification on the outstanding items that the Board wants so we can ensure that we have them to the Board in time for the Board to have plenty of time for review and community discussion before that April 24th work session.
Well, I think there are a number of us who could be helpful in pointing out the outstanding items from that work session because I believe there are. I can support this, but I think we're not accepting, it's as if we've moved from, we've divorced from reality, the fact that actions have consequences. And if we're going to delay, the consequence is that you have to fix the budget motion that comes after. You can't, you can't have it both ways. You can't say, well, we choose not to act on ERFC or we choose to delay it, but we're not going to do the work to fix the budget amendment that comes, or the budget motion that comes after. You can't have it both ways. And so I will be vehemently opposed to us passing that unless we enact something that puts in order the budget motion that as a result of us, I mean, we can make this choice and it sounds like we're going to, but you have, you have to align the rest of the Board's work for the rest of the night and make the budget motion reflect the decision that we're about to make. And this is the problem of making last-minute decisions. And usually there's a lecture that comes of not doing homework and I understand that this is a complex decision that needed to be made at the last second, but the fact that we have to make that decision doesn't absolve us of the responsibility to fix the budget motion that comes after. So I will support this, but only if we fix the budget motion.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Michael, I think that I had a question asking about the cost trends for ERFC that I don't think I've received an answer on and projections for those into the future. I think the one thing that is, I think, obvious to all of us is how important ERFC is to our teaching, teacher community. And we, as a Board, I believe, need to scrub and understand, you know, exactly how well this fund, the funds are being handled, how efficiently they're being managed and what the projections are in terms of the ERFC in the context of our future budgets. So, and we need to do that, all of those things and make sure that we are considering the balance between changing the promised benefit with current expenses that we can find ways to make the budget work. So I would appreciate if you would get that answer.
Yes, it's posted as response to budget question number 16 for this current fiscal year.
Right, so does that include the future out years? The projections?
Yes, it did include the projections in that response.
And so what are the projections in that we have?
Give me just one minute and I'll pull up the question.
Okay, so this is current years?
So that response states that if the fund performs this as actuarially projected, it's anticipated that the costs as a percentage of the total operating budget will remain stable. However, if actual experience deviates from the actuarial assumptions, then the rate could increase or decrease depending on our actual experience.
Right, so does this, so there's no future data. You're basically saying you can't predict. Is that what the answer is? I mean, I mean, there's a, I'm just trying to understand this trend line is, and this goes back to the question that I had in the work sessions, which is, you know, my starting point is, do we need to change a benefit that's beloved? And the only reason I can think of that we would need to do it is if it is unsustainable and we can't afford it. And so this information, I believe, is critical to that analysis.
I would say that it can be projected, the actuaries do a projection each year, right? And then each year, based on the actual experience, right, our projection from the actuaries is compared with that actual experience and then updated.
Okay, well, I mean, I think, I mean, if this is the answer, this is the answer, but it's not very helpful if it's, if the answer is, they could, they could increase or decrease depending on expenses. You know, we really need to drill down on those expenses and figure out, you know, what is our best guess is what's going to happen? Because I assume that the reason why we started having this discussion is that costs were rising at a rate that we believed needed to be adjusted within the context of our annual budget.
Correct. We started this discussion earlier this fiscal year when we did have increased rates for ERFC, right? And that was based on previous investment experience as well as updated mortality tables. So we started this conversation with that in mind and also knowing that we have compensation issues that need to be addressed, so really weighing the different aspects of compensation, salaries and benefits.
Well, I guess, so you're saying that, are you saying that yes, if we don't make changes, then it is unaffordable?
What I would say is the costs had increased for FY '18 based on our previous investment experience as well as the updated mortality tables. So to help address those increasing costs, knowing that we have a focus on compensation, we started these studies looking at possible ways that we could make changes, right? It's always a balance, right? As we're looking at expending money in terms of expending it, in terms of employee benefits, salaries, and the Board ultimately makes those decisions. And the purpose of these studies was to provide information to the Board so they could make the best decision looking at the limited resources that we have available to us in FY '18.
Okay, well, I'm in favor of postponing. I think that just this discussion alone is sort of evidence that clarity and understanding of exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it in the context of the other plethora of choices of what we could change to reduce costs. And some of those proposals are we're going to make tonight. And I think that these, these are, you know, the choices and they are, in fact, demonstrated priorities of this Board in terms of how we handle ERFC. And so I'm very much in favor of postponing this.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Mr. Wilson, thank you for asking those questions because I think one of the things that we've been talking about is, you know, how can we do things better, more effectively, more efficiently while still protecting the core of what we do, which is every decision that we make is how do we ensure that every, that the way we educate our children ensures the greatest success? And that means we make the investment in our personnel. And there are multiple ways of making the investment in our personnel. What we don't do is, we are not fund managers. And so some of the questions that are coming out are, are there more effective, more efficient ways of managing the fund which could realize some savings which then could be applied to reinvesting into the fund? And the other aspect is what Mrs. McLaughlin mentioned, which is, are we treating all of our employees equitably? Are we doing it whether they are in the FCREs system, which has a certain level of contribution, or if they are in the combined ERFC VRS system? And so this, these are lots of questions that we've spent a lot of time in the past year talking about, but we continue to unpack it more and more. And so there are more questions, there are more, there's more information that's necessary for people to make these informed decisions. I know that Ms. Huff has some questions about active versus passive, both she and Ms. Hines. And so having the time to unpack it and make that informed decision is going to be really important. And so we appreciate the staff's support in helping us get those questions answered and continuing the dialogue at another work session. To address Mrs. Schultz's concerns about the budget, what I would suggest is that we go ahead and adopt or put forth to a vote the delay motion. we go ahead and adopt, or put forth to a vote, the delay motion, and then we talk about the budget as a separate, how do we, you know, how do we fund it? Do we need to direct the superintendent to either increase the ask? Or do we need to ask the superintendent to, taking into account what we find from the future discussion on the ERFC, apply any savings we find through that discussion to it, and then find other savings? I mean, there are multiple ways of addressing it, but I would not use the, use that as a delay, a reason for not postponing this decision.
All right, seeing no other hands or lights, I will just make some brief comments. We did have quite a few work sessions on this. We received many documents and had long discussions. And in December, we directed the superintendent to put these savings into his budget, the $4.7 million in his budget. So I actually think we should be making a decision tonight, one way or the other. We've had this on our agenda for a while. We've had this discussion for, I believe, the last six months. I'm not sure we actually want to reopen this entire conversation, but it's clear that the board wants to do that, and wants a lot more information to consider other ideas. So with that, I, it's clear the board wants to do this, so I won't object, even though I actually think it's not a good idea. So with that, I will read the motion. I move to postpone the motion. I move to postpone the motion until the April 27 regular meeting. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that's unanimous, the motion passes.
Madam Chair, I have a, I have a motion.
Actually, I have a, I beg your pardon?
Madam Chair, I believe that there was a substitute motion to Ms. Palchik's own amendment. Now that becomes an amendment, we need to vote on that amendment.
It was, Mr. Foster, was that a substitute motion that we just voted on?
It was a substitute motion, yes.
All right, in that case, we need to vote on the original motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. We're voting, we're voting on the motion as substituted, we're basically just voting on the same thing a second time. All those in favor? And that motion passes. All right, so I will call on Mrs. Huff for a motion. Mrs. Huff had a motion that she would like to offer.
Mrs. Schultz, it sounds like she...
Yeah, Madam Chair, because we have voted to delay, I'm asking for leave of the chair to make a motion to amend the budget, because we did not consider that as a part of the previous motion.
Would you mind if I made my ERFC motion first?
We're not on the budget yet, so we need to get some, I've asked the clerk, and Mr. Foster, and Mrs. Quinn to give us some advice on what, if you'll read your email, I've asked you for that information.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
But we will get to that when we get to the budget, and now we're, I'm calling on Mrs. Huff for a motion.
Thank you, Chair Ovens.
Okay, so I'll read my motion now. "The FCPS School Board directs the ERFC Board of Trustees to provide an analysis of fund management alternatives. For example, the mix of passive and active management that may produce savings for the fund without harm to the interests of employees and retirees. It is expected that the ERFC Board of Trustees will bring that analysis to the school board on or before March 31, 2017."
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hines. Mrs. Huff, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. This is something that, in reading about the fund, and reviewing returns and results, I think that it'd be prudent and good governance by this board to be presented specific information, which will come in the form of a second motion. But as some background, looking at the one, five, and 10-year returns, ERFC is on the one- and five-year returns in the lowest quartile of returns compared to other public pension funds, and in the 10-year return ranked in the bottom half. Given that, I think it is prudent for us to ask some questions, and to look at some alternatives, at possibly lowering our fees, and helping save some money for our employees in our system.
Mrs. Hines?
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank Ms. Huff for bringing this up, and being willing to work with me on the language. I think as we try to do right by our new mid-career and retired teachers, balancing salaries and benefits, you know, because we do have to do that, we've done a lot of work on salaries, and now we're starting the work on benefits, to make sure that we're competitive, and we're balancing everything in tight times. I am increasingly convinced, from some of the conversations that I've heard, that we should look for savings in the management of the fund. And these would be savings that don't change the reality or the experience for employees and retirees, you know? If there's, if there's room for savings that doesn't come out of people's pockets, then that's where we should be looking for them. So I think we owe it to our employees to explore this.
All right, is there discussion of this motion? Mr. McAlveen?
This question would be for members of staff who sit on the ERFC Board of Trustees. This is an extensive amount of information that requires what looks to be extensive analysis. What is your ability to complete this in the timeframe suggested?
We did run through the dates with the ERFC staff, because it would really be the ERFC staff working with the investment consultant to do this report. I believe, as long as we can produce and deliver the report by March 31, we were also thinking that we would have some discussion at the April 24 work session regarding the two items that are currently put forth for follow-on motion. So I guess the short answer is, yes, we think it's doable, as long as we can deliver the report by March 31, and have a work session at the April 24, all-day work session.
Thank you.
Mr. McAlveen? All right, Ms. Palchik?
Yes, briefly, I want to thank Ms. Huff and Ms. Hines for bringing this forward. And part of the reason why eventually Ms. Corbett Sanders and I decided that we should postpone any changes that would affect our retirees, I think it would be important and prudent of us to see if there are any ways that we can find these savings in very tight times, short-term and definitely long-term, before we start to make those cuts on the backs of our teachers. So I will be supporting this motion.
I also have a legal question for the clerk, and for Mr. Foster. The way this reads now, it's a follow-on motion, and I believe the intention was for it to be a separate motion, isn't that the case? It needs to be, I don't believe this can be a follow-on motion, isn't that correct? Because we've just, we've voted to delay the motion, the previous motion, so, so isn't this simply a simple motion?
Right, I mean, it, I think your point is correct, but there's nothing that would stop, I think as you just got into, this follow-on motion from being raised as a main motion. I mean, under Roberts' rules, someone, a member of the body at any time can say, you know, "I hereby move as follows," and then, you know, it's either voted on, or it's not.
So shouldn't it read, "I move that the school board direct the ERFC board"?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please change that? Is that acceptable to you, Mrs. Huff? All right. Is there any objection to making that change? I might as well just, I'm seeing no objection to making that change, and we'll need to do that on the next motion as well. So these are simply their own motions, as opposed to follow-on motions. Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. Ms. Huff, Ms. Hines, I thank you for bringing this to the board. It's a really important motion. And there's another aspect that I think the public should know, which is that this was initially raised in the context of the citizen members participating in the Budget Task Force. And this is a wonderful example of citizen members becoming engaged in a process, and helping us to better understand how we can do things. And so I would like to also thank the citizen members of the Budget Task Force, and the other members of this board for bringing this forward.
All right, seeing no other lights on, I will call for a vote. The motion is, "I move that the FCPS School Board should be direct, I move that the School Board direct the ERFC Board of Trustees to provide an analysis of fund management alternatives, e.g., the mix of passive and active management, that may produce savings for the fund without harm to the interests of employees and retirees. It is expected that the ERFC Board of Trustees will bring that analysis to the School Board on or before March 31, 2017." Also, those in favor of this motion, raise your hand. That's unanimous, and that motion passes. I call on Mrs. Huff for a second motion.
"I move the FCPS School Board directs the ERFC Board of Trustees to bring to the School Board analysis and justification of investment choices." And, I'm sorry, I know, I was reading from there. Analysis and justification for investment choices. Report results, nets of fees, compare any active management selections against the related index used for comparison, and include no less than year-to-date, trailing 12 months, previous three years, previous five years, and previous 10-year periods. The report and a discussion on potential future reporting is expected no later than March 31, 2017."
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hines. Mrs. Huff, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate Ms. Corbett Sanders bringing up the work of the Budget Task Force and our citizens, because I was remiss in mentioning that myself. So I do think that it is a great example of how rich our county is in resources that exist within our own community members. And then also, I want to thank Ms. Hines for working with me on this, on detailing out what kind of information we feel would be helpful to us. And in talking to Ms. Quinn and Ms. Michael, I understand that much of this information is already written out and reported to us on an annual basis. This is a little bit more inclusive, and Ms. Quinn has agreed that this would be easy to put in and then present to us, so don't imagine it is more work. I just think that, given the public conversation we're having over ERFC, it would be good to come to us specifically, in the context of the conversation on ERFC, to review, discuss, and ask questions.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, thank you. Everything Ms. Huff just said, I won't repeat it. I think it's just really worthwhile information for us to have, and I'm grateful to people in the community who have kind of been knocking on our door and telling us that we really should have better information for the oversight role that we have. Mike, I actually have a question about this, now that I'm looking at it. The last sentence is, "The report and a discussion on potential future reporting is expected no later than March 31." So is, are we, would, Ms. Quinn? I don't know, and maybe, Ms. Huff, do you have any recommendations? Maybe we...
I am okay with taking out "and discussion," because it sounds like the plan is a work session on April 24, which also, to me, means that the delay of motion we discussed, and that work session would correlate at the same time.
Yes, that was our current thinking of when we would bring the discussion to the board.
Okay, and we feel like that's going to be enough time to then have a motion for April 27?
Yes.
Okay.
We should be able to meet that timeline.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, did you just amend your motion, Mrs. Huff?
Just scratch "and discussion." I'm okay with that.
Okay, and where was that?
It's the last sentence. I think she already did it.
All right, so you've amended your motion, and Ms. Hines is in agreement with that. All right, Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you, I'll support this. And for those who are listening, we do get a yearly investment report on the performance of the portfolio. So this is, in this motion, it does describe in detail the scope of the information that we would like, which is appropriate. But I just wanted to let people know that we do get a fairly detailed investment report each year. It is important, obviously, that we make sure that we are as efficient as possible with this pension plan, and if there are opportunities for us to make adjustments, to save money in terms of either better performance of the investment portfolio, or savings on the management of the plan, obviously, that is always incumbent, that we are looking at that. And I know the Board of Trustees, that is their job as well, and that's part of their responsibility, and they are active overseers of the plan. So I do support this, and I look forward to getting the report. Thank you.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes, I just want to say, I want to thank Ms. Huff for this motion. I do support it. I do believe that there is, there are fiduciary responsibilities on the part of the ERFC Board, and I think that in concert with the members, the public members of the superintendent's Budget Task Force, many of whom were appointed by this board, this shows that the board is seeking accountability in those fiduciary responsibilities. And I just want to say that if somebody had been watching the agenda of the board, there were amendments on there that were mine, I don't want to confuse the public, that come later, that sound very similar to this, and just to, because of the, again, the last-minute delays, I move those to budget follow-on motions. So we're going to see a little bit more ERFC discussion later, but they're all akin to the same purpose as this, which is seeking the accountability in looking at the costs of ERFC, and trying to do what we can for the management side of that. And so I think this is a very reflective motion, and I definitely will support it.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I appreciate the support that my colleagues have expressed for this motion. I guess the one thing that comes to mind for me is, how come this isn't something we're already expecting? I mean, I read this language, and I would think this should be standard operating procedure. So is there something else that's been done in the past instead of this? Because I have to be honest, if I were in the public right now, looking at this motion, I'd be thinking, so what is the board doing in terms of getting this type of analysis to ensure that the ERFC is functioning at its optimal level?
We do do an annual state of ERFC reporting to the Board every year. We did that in July, so we give these three, five, seven, 10-year returns, along with the funded ratio of the plan, and a considerable amount of information, statistics on the plan membership, the board's strategic initiatives. So we've, I've done that for the last seven years, and I know the executive director did that prior to me. So we report on all of the governance policies and procedures. We have these reports available on Board Docs, too, that our quarterly investment consultant produces. So those are posted to our Board Doc site, so I think we're very transparent on all the work that has been done by the Board of Trustees.
So just to maybe make my question a little more clear, when you, when you read this motion, and it's got A, B, C, and D in its expectations, I guess, the way it reads, it's saying as if we haven't done this. So, and you're telling me that of these four requests, this is, some or parts of this does get done, just maybe not all of them?
We certainly have justification... We certainly have justifications for all of the asset allocation that we've done and each of the asset classes that we've added. Those are part of the public record of the Board of Trustees minutes. We do do reporting annually on our returns, so we have the trailing three, five, 10-year returns. We certainly can reproduce, can produce those and show those to you again. If you want this reporting in April, we will do the calendar year 2016 and report that to you. So we give comparisons against our benchmarks and against our peer group, which are those public pension plans greater than $1 billion.
All right. Based on your response, I think, I'm trying to piece this together with clarity, A, B, and C are asking you to do something that you don't typically do.
This would require us to go back historically and say, why are we in this asset class? Why are we in unconstrained fixed income? And, you know, we would give the rationale because we think interest rates have nowhere to go but up. We became more defensive and we wanted to protect the assets of the fund, so we got into an unconstrained fixed income strategy. I think that's what you're asking by part A. Why did we get into each of the asset classes that we're in?
And report results of net fees. Do you not typically do that?
We don't do that against our peer group because our peer group doesn't report net of fees. But as part of our quarterly performance report, we do have a net of fees section that's posted on Board Docs. It's a public document. So we can add that to the School Board reporting, but we won't be able to do it as a peer comparison because our peers don't report that way.
Well, I guess, Madam Chair, I would like to just then ask Ms. Huff, since she's the maker of this motion, a question?
Certainly.
So, Ms. Huff, when you drafted this motion, did you consult with staff to understand what currently gets done and therefore what you felt, and Ms. Hines, who co-sponsored this with you, what additional information is just simply not being provided as of now so that this is what you're framing out?
Yes, Ms. Quinn and I did discuss that, that this is, some of this is already reported. And as I stated when I made the motion, I realized that much of this is already reported. But I think in context of the conversation we're going to have about the management and the different alternatives, and now in addition, what we didn't vote on earlier tonight, I just think that this is good to have handy and to be there. I do realize we could look it up in Board Docs, and much of this is there. But for us to have a conversation in context, I think it is prudent for us to be looking at all at the same time with the same information.
Well, thank you for that clarity. And that right there is exactly why I would support this motion because in the six years I've been on this board, one of the things that this school system is still trying to continuously improve on, and as a board member, we are drastically not there, which is having a synthesis of information in one spot. So because with everything that the board has to determine, when it's in different places, then it's really difficult for the board as well as the public who's following the work we do to understand what information is informing on the final decisions we make. So this alone, if you're telling me we're going to bring it all together and have it in a place so that we can have a thoughtful discussion with it synthesized, then, you know, again, you have my full support then.
Mrs. Huff?
So I just wanted to make one clarifying. We took out "and discussion" for the motion, but for both motions, I just want to make clear that as part of the reporting, "expected no later than," I would like it posted for both the board and the public to review prior on or before March 31. Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no other lights on, I will read the motion before us. "I move that the FCPS School Board direct the ERFC Board of Trustees to bring to the School Board, A, analysis and justification for investment choices; B, report results net of fees; C, compare any active management selections against the related index used for comparison; and D, include no less than year-to-date trailing 12 months, previous three years, previous five-year, and previous 10-year periods. The report on potential future reporting is expected no later than March 31, 2017." All those in favor, raise your hand. That's unanimous, and that motion passes. So that concludes our section on the ERFC for tonight. I am going to call for a five-minute recess while I consult with our attorneys about what we've just done affects what we're about to do. So don't go very far, board members. We'll be back.